Let's get started then, just to join me about historical preservation. I'm going to turn it over to you. Does everybody know everyone here? Should we just go around and ask each other names or are we good? Yes.
All right.
Um, Atassi Tetlow, I'm Assistant City Attorney with the city and I primarily advise public works, planning and development services and, uh, well, yes.
I'm Austin Blanigan, I'm one of your special counsel particularly hired to assist you guys in this presentation, working Sunday.
I'm Glenn Van Nemen, I'm the planning director.
I'm Jody Marsh, Assistant City Manager.
Tim Warner, City Council.
Aaron Rodriguez, City Council.
Marshall Martin, City Council.
Joan Caplan, City Council.
Joan Farnady, City Council.
Steve Land, City Council.
Holly Norton, HPC.
Sarah Zinn, HPC.
Suzanne Simms, HPC.
And the lady.
Chiquita Yocarol, City Council.
Sandy Cedar, Assistant City Manager.
Good to see you.
And here comes Susie.
Uh, Jennifer Hugh Aperson, Planning Staff.
Chiquita, this one right here.
Brian Schumacher, City Council.
Um, Councilmember Susie Lavelle Perry.
Great.
We're just getting started.
Um, yeah, Jill and, uh, you and me, are you just part of the public? Just by the way.
Amber Mia.
Oh, you're the Amber Mia. So, uh, I'm just going to turn it over to Glenn Van Nemen.
I'm going to shift it to Atassi.
So, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers, uh, members of the Historic Preservation Committee. Just introduce myself. I work for the city, uh, in the Assistant City Attorney's Office. And so, sitting in for Eugene tonight, he is in France, uh, lucky guy. But, uh, tonight, we are going to be discussing the topics that are going to be, there you go, shown on slide two. This is our agenda for tonight. And we are going to be quickly recapping some of the backgrounds that, um, both members of the Historic Preservation Committee and council members may have heard previously, I think in the past month or so. And then we're going to move on to larger, more substantive issues that you can see, uh, in sections two through, uh, six. So, the topics that are going to be presented to you tonight are those that are primarily focused on, um, some areas of concern that have been highlighted by our outside counsel, Austin from Hoffman Parker, as well as our, uh, committee members from the Historic Preservation Committee and staff. And so, with regard to just a brief, quick history of the project, HPC, our staff members, started working on revising the code amendments, taking a look at some areas of concern last year, and Austin and Hoffman Parker was on boarded. And what we're going to see tonight is what are the, the primary areas of concern? And as I mentioned, we've discussed them before. And so, the options presented to you today are going to be legally defensible options. Um, they are going to be our recommended course of action, um, as far as what we are going to suggest as far as code amendments. And so, right now, as I mentioned, we looked at legally defensible options. We did not have a eye out for policy issues, but you know, we welcome, we absolutely welcome feedback on those policy issues so we can more in, so we can bring our code more in line with those legal concerns that we might bring up in any, uh, direction that we were seeking city council tonight. So, it's our intention to try and get through, um, some of, uh, most of these topics and obtain direction on where city staff members and city attorney's office and Hoffman Parker can go from here. Uh, but if we don't hit them all, that's, you know, we get more than welcome, we're more than happy to come back at another day to follow up on some of these. With that, I will turn it over to Austin.
Thank you, Atassi. All right, so we'll start with a brief overview of the legal framework in the U.S. for historic preservation. You have it at each level of government in the U.S. So, it started in 1966 with the passage of the National Preservation Act. And what that did was create the National Register and state historic preservation offices, which are colloquially referred to as SHIBOs. So, at the state level, you have these SHIBOs that administer the National Historic Preservation Program. Um, and a lot of what they do is actually in this last point here, it's that Section 106 review, which is to ensure that, um, historic resources are taken to, into account anytime there's federal funding being spent. So, I say all of that as way of background, but of course today, what we're going to be talking about is the local level, Longmont's Historic Preservation Code. And this is really where a lot of the work for local, um, or for historic preservation is done, it's on the local level. So, again, taking a step back before we dive into the, some of the substance tonight, so why have a local historic preservation code generally? Of course, it's to protect historic buildings, to protect historically significant areas in a community. But what you'll also see with most historic preservation codes is, let's talk about these two bullet points, and we took these straight from the current, um, code. And they have to do with enhancement of property values, they have to do with, um, the financial gain that can be benefited from historically preserving buildings. More on that later. And actually, if I can get that, this is actually a picture of downtown Longmont. Um, let me back. Oh, oh. Okay, so we'll start with designation criteria. So, when we say designation in the context of historic preservation, what we really mean is how you get in to historic preservation, how you get into the historic preservation regulations. It's another word of saying rezoning. Um, in each one of these, um, issues, we'll talk about some of the current language, and then we'll talk about again, our proposed language, and that's just one alternative. Um, and again, what we're proposing here is based on what we believe is the most legally defensible avenue. There's certainly a whole lot of avenues to go, um, but our eye was really toward, um, just that legal issue, um, element. So, in the current criteria, there's a little bit of a question of how the criteria is actually applied, and you'll see that in the underlying language, the and/or language. You don't have to get into the nuts and bolts of it, but all that to say is that we propose to clarify this, to make it clear that to get in to historic preservation, you not only have to have an age requirement, you also have to have a requirement that the property be historically significant in some manner. And so, we go into some specifics on what historical significance actually means, and you have to check at least one of those boxes along with the age requirement to get in, be designated. And we've also clarified that, um, this process will run similar to your current rezoning process, with the exception that instead of the planning commission, you have the Historic Preservation Commission hearing the issue first, and council due to one ultimately deciding on the issue. We've also added some requirements for non-consensual designation. Non-consensual designation is, um, when a property owner isn't bringing the application forward themselves, the property owner isn't the one saying, "I want to be a part of a historic preservation district," someone else is. Um, and so, in those situations, there's a current percentage of, um, property owners that must be, um, signed on to the application for it to be able to be put forward, for the application to be accepted. And so, what we've proposed, proposed is to elevate that percentage slightly. I think that's it for this one, we'll talk about the HPO and what that means in just a moment. Um, so today, you, well, now you do, but before this process, we didn't have this map. We weren't, um, we had a list of designated properties, but we didn't have the map. So, as a part of this process, staff has an excellent job of mapping out all of the historically designated properties as it stands today. So, those red dots are the actual properties, what's known as a landmark for historic preservation purposes, and those green, blue, and purplish, maybeish color are your historic districts.
Those are national districts.
So, national districts, that's my way. Yeah, so those are, yeah. So, going back to that federal process under the Historic Preservation Code, the state was the one to administer this process and create those districts through the federal regulations rather than the local regulations, those shaded areas, the green, blue, and purple-ish, maybeish color are your historic districts.
Those are national districts.
So, national districts, that's my way. Yeah, so those are, yeah. So, going back to that federal process under the Historic Preservation Code, the state was the one to administer this process and create those districts through the federal regulations rather than the local regulations, those shaded areas, the green, blue, and purple. Okay, so we just talked about the actual criteria, how you're eligible to get in, but we want to talk a little bit about the actual mechanics of the process. Um, so as I just stated previously, there was, um, no mapping exercise associated with designation, it was just a list of parcels. Um, staff's done a great job of mapping those parcels. And what we're proposing to do is actually create a new district, which would be a Historic Preservation Overlay District, or HPO. And the reason we're choosing, um, to go about it this way, it's certainly not the only way to do it, we think it alleviates some of the notice concerns and some of the concerns around, um, how historic preservation can act a little bit differently than your typical zoning mechanisms, even though most property owners probably, um, don't have an excellent idea of that distinction, if they're looking for what regulations apply to their property, they're probably going to go to the zoning map, look at their zoning district, and then look at the regulations for that zoning district. That seems to make the most sense for most folks. What wouldn't they want to see is if they were designated in that process. We're proposing to change that, integrate the historic preservation regulations into the current LDC, Your Land Development Code. And with that would be this district, it would be in your list of overlay districts, that means it's superimposed on the base zoning district, we're not doing any rezoning, it's a mapping exercises of what you saw on that previous slide, it would come into the zoning map. So, what you saw on that previous slide would come into the zoning map, it would be designated as a historic preservation overlay district, any future designation would also be considered a part of that HPO. I think that's all I want to say about that. And again, we can come back to any of this, I know I'm kind of zooming through all of this, but we really want to have a lot of time to talk with you guys today and discuss, um, the general parameters of, um, these big issues. So, we have this slide here just to show you how it could work in practice if we created this historic preservation overlay, and it would look just like your Terry Lake overlay, it would be superimposed on, um, the zoning map, and you would see it on the zoning map. So, it would show up, um, here, which is like a historic area, you'd be able to see whether or not you have historic preservation regulations attached to your property.
Okay, the red line doesn't show up very well. Is the red line the?
It's the.
Yeah, that's, that's the LDVA, but where is, where, where is the area you're talking about?
So, it's not actually mapped yet, I just showed you this slide to show that it would, this is how it would be mapped. Um, it would be on the zoning map, it would show up as a district in the legend, just under that Terry Lake overlay, you could see an HPO, historic preservation overlay. And once you go through that mapping exercise, this is where you'd see it. So, today you don't.
I don't see the Terry Lake overlay either.
Which actually, it's.
Right down here.
It's not, it's on the north end of town.
So, that was a confusing. Right, that was a confusing way to say that we're proposing to integrate historic preservation regulations into your land development code, you'd be able to see on the zoning map whether or not you're in that historic preservation overlay. So, all in one place, you'd see your base zoning district and those standards, and you'd see any overlay applied to you as well in those standards. And now, I'll turn it over to Glenn, and he'll talk about some of the implications of this designation process.
Right. Yeah, and I think this is probably the bulk of what, uh, the Historic Preservation Commission wants to discuss, but as Austin mentioned, as we tighten up the criteria and we require that HPO in order to enforce, um, historic preservation requirements, we have some conflicts with the way we've been doing it since, um, close to the beginning of time. And the first one is really, has to do with demolitions. We have a criteria, basically it has to be 50 years old, and it has to meet one of a couple of different criteria. And then, if somebody comes in to do either a partial or a full demolition of their structure, a member of staff sits down with a council member and reviews that application and decides whether it's approved or not approved. Probably should fall under the purview of the HPC to some degree, um, but that's not the way it's set up now. The other conflict is, um, they're not designated properties. So, um, as Austin and Atassi mentioned, we want a legally defensible code, and that would mean we'd go through the process of, um, the historic preservation overlay to put it in place, and then the demolition regulations would apply. Um, there is some flex, well, I won't say flexibility yet, but there's other ways to look at that. Um, one way is in order to, and I think the HPC would say, there are some beautiful buildings that haven't been designated, certainly could be if the landowner would agree to it, and then there could be a level of preservation involved. So, um, staff could make a concerted effort to identify those buildings and reach out to the landowner and compel them, maybe that's too strong of a word, but provide carrots to hopefully get them to either, um, designate it as a landmark or come in as a district. Um, there may be another way that if you look at the scale of legal defensibility with the HPO being at the highest end, um, what I just described would probably be really close, because you're not forcing anybody to do anything, you're just giving them carrots to, to, um, come in, would be, um, if we did a code amendment and we tightened up the criteria, and we said, okay, if you're 75 years old and you meet these criteria and you're within the original town site of Longmont, um, potentially, we could then control demolitions to a certain end there, that we have to do a whole lot more work, but there is, on that scale, there are some opportunities. Um, creation of new districts and landmarks, I, I think Austin mentioned it, it's really what we're doing now, except now we're calling it the zoning process. Um, HPC's reviewing it, they're making recommendations, city council's adopting an ordinance, and in this case, staff would then put it on the map, so somebody would know that their property's designated. And all those red dots you saw on the map before, they would automatically become, um, HPO, um, districts, because we've gone through that process, they've been notified, so we can, I'll, I'll immediately incorporate them into the ordinance. Um, so it's really no different than what we're doing, other than we're calling it the zoning process, and we're doing the notification, and we're putting it on the map. Um, we've talked about new design guidelines, and, um, staff brought that forward, and council approved, um, a budget to adopt design guidelines. Um, as we've designated it now, that would only apply to the HPO areas. Um, but we know, um, that like historic east side neighborhood has some concerns about, um, incompatible structures or architecture. There would be another way, um, again, following kind of the same scale for reviewing demolitions, where, um, staff could, uh, reach out and hopefully compel somebody to join a district or join a landmark, or we can adopt an overall, um, section in our code perhaps, like the industrial design guidelines that we presented to you last week. It, it's, these are conceptual design guidelines that apply to every industrial building. Would be the same way here perhaps, um, within the original town site or whatever that criteria is, a little bit off the scale of legal defensibility, um, but in, in the realm of possibilities. So, there's some possibilities, um, for that. Non-conceptual designations, it's kind of a loose process right now, basically staff can meet with HPC and, and decide, um, maybe we should designate this property, you make a recommendation to city council, and then city council decides whether we go through a formal process to do that. Um, I think what we're talking about now, which I think would be the better way, is we follow that process and we require some additional levels, whether, um, I think we're saying if it's a district, there should be 50% of the people within that district that agree, um, we should designate this as a historic district. Um, so, in one way, the other 50% are maybe not, are coming along, um, maybe not picking and screaming, but they're, we don't have to get full consent. Um, but again, it's up to the city council to agree. Um, removal of designations, this is something also in the code where somebody can petition, um, staff, and I believe it does go to HPC, and it could be for economic reasons, it could be that a portion of the structure is burnt, um, it could be for a number of reasons, they want to remove that designation. Um, and what I think we're going to propose is tightening up those standards of when somebody can, um, remove themselves from their landmark or their district designation. And one of the reasons we, um, have talked about is if, uh, there's a good reason for attainable and affordable housing, um, so I'll kick it back to, uh, um, Austin, who's been asked to look in some of these areas.
Excellent, um, that's a good segue into this conversation, we know it's a really big one. Um, and so, I guess I'll say at the forefront, if it feels that you guys just don't have the necessary information tonight, we're happy to come back with more options, we're happy to come back with a separate presentation just on this issue, to explore how we can balance, um, the affordable and attainable housing goals with the historic preservation goals. Like I said at the outset, you know, I think part of what's embedded in historic preservation is the preservation of land, and as a part of that, you typically get benefits economically. It typically means you have higher land value, so if you're in a historically designated district, your price of land just got higher. And so, I think that's something just fair to say, and I think most historic preservation folks, um, would agree on that part, maybe not, I'd like to hear, um, their thoughts. But, all of that to say, this is, the, these goals, I think, can absolutely be balanced. We're throwing, um, a couple of options out there tonight, um, just for discussion purposes, this is by no means all of the options out there, um, but really, we want to hear, um, from all of you, um, how best to strike this balance, how, how this balance would be best strike for the city. So, this is just for discussion purposes, I mean, we can come back to this, but we've shown some examples there on the slide, um, just for discussion purposes, but, um, before we get there, I think we can go ahead and finish up the rest of the talk on the procedures related to historic preservation, and at the end, we'll come back to, um, all of these topics and discuss whatever you all would like to discuss. So, the certificate of appropriateness process is something unique to historic preservation, and what it does is a process that is required for historically designated structures, um, before that structure or that designated property, um, does typically any sort of exterior, exterior work. So, it's another, um, procedural step that you have to follow if you're designated, um, property, and the reason for that is to ensure that the exterior change isn't aligned with the character of the historic district or landmark. So, right now, there's one process for certificate of appropriateness and a separate process for demolitions. And I think Glenn did a great job of describing the current demolition process. What we're proposing, um, is to separate the certificate of appropriateness process out into two processes, one major and one minor. The major would absorb the demolition permit, and so you would be required to get a major certificate of appropriateness if you were seeking a demolition of a designated structure, that would require, um, HPC hearings and city council hearings. And then the minor certificate of appropriateness would be a streamlined process for more minor, um, alterations to a designated property, and we can get into some examples of what that looks like, but it's, um, would be very flushed out, I think last time I incorrectly stated you could just replace a window with a minor certificate of appropriateness, but that's actually not true, even as we've discussed it, it would have to be, um, a replacement of a window either with a historic replica or a window that is, has no historic value, so one that's already been replaced in the last 10 years, saying. It's just an example of how that's more flushed out. So, it's very specific criteria that allows you to get a streamlined certificate of appropriateness, so you can get that work done to your historic structure. And then, maintenance requirements, this is something we heard, um, quite a bit about when we first started this conversation with historic preservation, um, I was not even a part of it, but we read all of the drafts from historic preservation, and there was some concern that some properties might do something, um, called demolition by neglect, meaning you would let your property become so dilapidated that it would be then eligible for a permit for demolition. And so, we've gone through this, or gone about this in a couple of different ways, we're proposing to instead add maintenance requirements that would act as your baseline, so all designated properties would have to be maintained in a similar manner to which when the property was initially designated. And then we've added criteria to that major CA, the certificate of appropriateness, to ensure that properties that were intentionally neglected wouldn't be eligible for that, um, demolition, they wouldn't be eligible to obtain that CA, and instead, they'd be forced to maintain their property to habitable standards as it was before. So, that's the maintenance requirements, and this is the last thing I'll say, and I've been talking a lot, um, and then we'll kind of go through an overview of, um, everything we talked about and focus on whatever you all would like to talk about. This was another, um, issue raised by the Historic Preservation Commission some time ago. Right now, on the left, you have the injunctive inequitable relief available for violations of the Historic Preservation Code. Again, we're trying to align this with the LDC, so what we've done is brought in enforcement violations that are currently available under the Land Development Code, and then added to that would be specific to historic preservation. And those would entail folks that are really trying to cheat, um, the designation process, cheat the certificate of appropriateness process by assessing penalties in the way of not allowing building permits for a certain time period. Um, if that property owner did some alteration or demolished their property, um, without getting that correct approval, then they wouldn't be eligible for that building permit for a certain period of time, so essentially delaying their construction. Those are just options, um, certainly nothing has been decided, nothing we've discussed has been decided, we're just, um, excited to talk about these issues with all of you, and feel that it's kind of easier to talk about them when you have some sort of proposal in front of you. So, all that to say, um, we're happy to hear, um, all of your thoughts, questions, comments. Again, this is, these are the main slides or main issues we discussed today, just in way of background.
I have a question about the HPO. You guys said, uh, at several points, that was really going to apply to that original, like, one mile square of the Old Town. Is there a process to have additional areas of the city added or have their own HPO?
Great question, so let me clarify, it will act just like any other overlay district, so no matter where you are in the city, if you meet the criteria for designation, and you go about the approval process, city council approves after an HPC hearing, then you are eligible to, um, be designated in the HPO. So, we use the town, the original town site as kind of example, as those properties that are probably most likely to be designated, but not to say that there is others now.
Just a quick follow-up on that, so, would the HPO include, in essence, the original town site as a whole or own, you're talking about.
Only the properties that have gone through the current designation process.
Each individual property into that HPO one at a time.
Right, so all of the properties that have already been designated locally, you could just bring in through an ordinance approved by the town council, no additional process, you could just bring them into this ordinance and map them on the zoning map. Any future designation would have to go through the designation process we talked about, they would have to meet the criteria and be approved by it.
So, you're tying HPO to a landmark, essentially, to a local landmark?
Not necessarily, so, it could be a landmark or it could be a district, it's really more of a mapping and zoning exercise than it is a substantive change.
But, you're right, we don't have any district, we don't have any local districts today.
I would also like to gently add, um, in your nice overlay of, you know, federal, state, local, um, a lot of the state register stuff has been left out. I'm not aware of any specific property that is not either designated locally or federally, that's not, that's, you know, separate on the state register, but we want to make sure that we were capturing all of that really for it. So, and that's information that's helpful, so, right. Easy enough for us to get.
Yeah, um, could you go back to the slide with the pink yellow and, not that one, but the one before that?
Less confusing.
Okay, yeah. So, um, you said we don't have any districts right now, but on that map, you've got three areas that say they are districts, are they or aren't they? And what's the, because I don't think we've really defined what a district is, and there's a second piece of, there's a second usage of the word district that confused me, and I think it was what you were getting at, but really, are those three bright colored ones districts or not?
They're not local districts.
Okay.
They're designated under the state regulations.
So, those are state districts, and the, um, and the local overlay district that you are proposing is not contiguous in any way, but rather, it's a little square drawn around every single dot on the map.
Okay.
Because I don't think you said that.
Right, yes, the, only the landmarks are, would get HPO.
And the, and the local overlay district that you are proposing is not contiguous in any way, but rather it's a little square drawn around every single dot on the map. Because I don't think you said that.
Right. Yes, only the landmarks are, would get HBO immediately. It would be up to going through the process for any future districts.
Okay, got it. So just to clarify that, so we do have three national register districts. Those would be contiguous blocks, yes. Right? So it would, no?
They would have to go through the designation process in the local ordinance.
So could we recommend doing very similar to what the state does? That if something is listed at the national or state level, that we automatically list it as a city so that we don't have to do all this in the process?
You couldn't automatically do it. You'd have to go through your designation process. But that's part of the benefit of the HBO is that if you wanted to map these exact state blobs, state districts, you could use the HBO to do that and get those exact lines the same and bring them into your local ordinance. You'd have to have hearings. There'd have to be a notice period.
And what status does that give to the homes that are in a state district but not, are not along a landmark and therefore not in the proposed overlay district? Because the residents of those homes will have different opinions on whether they want to be in the overlay district or not.
Right.
And what, what are their rights and not and constraints? I mean, maybe that's, you guys probably already know that, except that I don't know whether the overlay district would cause a change in that.
Well, the main advantage is through grants.
And tax credits. I'm sorry, and tax credits.
And tax credits, right. So if somebody wanted to upgrade their facade, they potentially could get tax credits and grants through the state. So it's primarily a carrot system to maintain it. And the city as well has, we allow building permits to be reduced and those fees to be reduced for a landmark or for a change to a landmark.
So going back to incorporating these, so there is a very long process and a really large amount of review that goes into a national register district. At the state, when we go through that entire process, when I say we automatically make it a state register district as well, we take it to our board and say, hey, the review board, the keeper in Washington involved a treaty that they should be national register. We recommend they get put on the city register. And then they are. There's not additional hearings. If we can do that at the local level, I recommend that because I think that would save a lot of staff time and other folks' times instead of going to a hearing instead of having to be a part of it.
We're talking here now.
Can I just add to that? I just want to clarify. You said you'd have to, if you'd have to go through a hearing process. But you're saying you'd have to go through a hearing process based on what the new code... Not, I mean, the city council could adopt whatever it wants. So that if this idea seems to be a more efficient and appropriate way to do it, they can just adopt that. And then future changes would have to go through a hearing process. But there's nothing in the city code now that...
So let me just go quick. With regard to our city code, one of the, one of the recommendations that we're making is to bring this historic preservation into our land development code. And our land development code currently does have public hearing process in place. And so certain applications require public hearing and notice, and then others don't. They can be handled administratively by our director. And so in this instance, you know, if we wanted to cut down local hearings, we would have to make sure that there are exceptions written into the land development code to allow for that. So currently, as it's written...
City council decision, but just...
Correct.
Just wanted to clarify that these are, this could all be part of a massive piece of work, which includes a one-time fix to the land development code for this one-time changeover process. And that doesn't mean that it shouldn't be how it's done all the time, but just, it's that one. I want to go back to, if I could, to the attainable slide. As you said, and I was expecting when you got to the end, so you're going to come back to that. Are you coming back later in the day or...
I, I just...
You mean, come back to it now?
Yeah, absolutely. I'd love to. I just meant as far as it's interesting or you guys would like to discuss it, but wanted to make sure it's your meeting and not...
Well, this is a, I think this is a very good deal.
Right.
And I'd be interested in what your thoughts were of the three points and then see what people think.
Yeah, I can talk about these just for a couple of minutes, just to explain what these options are. Again, this is just a couple of options. But you could do things that support attainable housing, like allow ADUs without additional approval. So basically saying that even though your designated property, we're not going to enforce the design standards or any additional standards on the development of an EDU. And so it'd be an exception to the general rule, essentially, that new construction in a designated district would typically require a different process. But that, you could bring that out and have it as an exception. You could also allow for the conversion, if you took a step further, of a designated property, a property... Oh, sorry.
No. Oh, no, you can finish answering him. I just was getting a line.
So you could allow for the conversion of a property into something a little bit more dense, like some sort of flux, if certain standards are meant to preserve the exterior of the structure. So if you're just working at the interior and changing the density and going from a single-family dwelling use to something of higher density, could allow for some procedural streamline, essentially, for those types of conversions. And then this would be obviously a lot, a lot more on the side of attainable and affordable housing. But you could allow a complete off-grant from historic preservation properties, properties that are designated, if that property owner enters into a development agreement and agrees to, for instance, deed restrict the new construction for affordable and attainable housing. Those are some options I've seen in other communities, but there's, there is quite a lot more out there. But it gives you a flavor of how you can go about it.
So these bullet points about ADUs refers to, apply very easily in certain cases and are very difficult to apply in other cases. So if you've got a yard and you can build an ADU in your backyard and you can't see it from the front, there shouldn't be any issues with putting an ADU back there because it doesn't change the character of the neighborhood. But a, a, a second story on a garage, over a garage can be an ADU. And a basement entrance can be an ADU or a duplex conversion. And I don't know how you tell those two apart. And, you know, again, adding a second story over part of the, part of the building. If you call it an ADU, is that... Because there are some examples of this, you know, in the historic West Side where they've added a, a second story on the back half of the building that completely changed the look of the house. So how, what are you thinking in terms of how, how that would be applied? Because, you know, I'm a big proponent of increasing density, but, you know, you can make a mess.
Well, I think the future design guidelines would help ease it. I think that would go a long ways. And in some cases, they could be so specific that it'd be something even done at a state level and not necessarily bring in HPC.
So bullet point number three, we already had pushback on this from the historical East Side, that a new building, regardless if it's for an attainable housing, does not preserve the integrity of the neighborhood. So I would like to put the section on the second bullet point that says that it aimed to preserve the exterior structure. Something similar in the third bullet point, that the exterior structure must, I don't know, reflect the historical value of the neighborhood. Otherwise, you will destroy the district. So I think that's important. And to Marcia's point on the first bullet point, if we just put that in the code, in the ADU, the addition of an ADU per our code now doesn't have any kind of, I guess, requirements for what that looks like. But I do think in a historical district, regardless, it, it still has to fit in with the historical value of the neighborhood. Otherwise, it could be a barn. I mean, or just, no, I mean, the look of...
A barn could be technically...
With the character. Well, let me set that up. It could just be something very different than what was there before.
Don't these all be signed? Go with the...
I think they would, which we've been kind of asking for.
So I'm here as an HPC commissioner, but I wear another hat where I really advocate for affordable housing. And I think the first one and the last one are terrible ideas in this context. You know, I think if, because especially, because right now, what you're proposing is that the HBO is just landmarked properties, which I, on another note, I don't know if we're, is enough. But if we're talking about you have a landmark property, then you should go in front of the HPC if you want to alter that property here. It doesn't mean you can't do an ADU, but you should go through the, the, you should go through the HPC. It's the whole point of having a historic preservation commission. Because, because it's not just residential design guidelines. It's a whole bunch of other criteria that's set up by the Secretary of Interior. And we have a whole federal, there's a reason why there are professionals on your, your HPC because it's, it's more complicated. And then allowing, you know, the few historic properties that we have, landmarked, out, you know, to not be a landmark, just to provide housing, just seems like we're, there are other ways to provide housing. So I, I would push back pretty hard on that.
I would also really like us to avoid any, like, language or messaging that somehow historic preservation and affordable housing are more densely arranged than this. And I think that as a community, we can find ways to meet both without, without sacrificing historic preservation so badly to the public.
And I think that's a point, like, we would love your guys' expertise on enacting some either processes or standards that get us there.
Also say that what you're proposing as, as part of the overlay is this HBO feels like, is, is a good way to clean up what we have now and bring it into land use code so it's all in one place. But it's also pretty much a lateral move in terms of protecting neighborhoods. And I would, I would like the city council to understand, at least from what, what we have heard and you've probably heard some of it from East Side as well, is that a lot of the concern, and I know this one commissioner's not here, sent me a long email expressing his concern, so I'm partly supporting for Commissioner Jacoby as well, is, you know, a concern about the, the small-scale original townsite neighborhoods and the size and scale of those. And there are properties that might be worthy of a designation but aren't designated if they're eligible for just being demolished or, you know, greater density and height. And at some point, do you want to protect the neighborhoods, the smaller original townsite neighborhoods, in terms of their scale in a way that's a little broader than just identifying what we already have and saying this, you're only, you're only in this HBO if you're already landmarked? That, that's not going to be enough, that's not what I know the public has come to our meetings is looking for, just for whatever that's worth.
So maybe for me, a clarification of what a historic district is versus if you're saying it is only certain homes within an area rather than the whole area, this, this is where I'm a little confused. When you go back to that red, blue, and, nope, one more, there. So each of those dots is a designated district, you said?
Locally.
But is it, is it one home?
Typically.
So how can one home be a district?
It, so it would be in a district, like, as a part of the zoning map.
Okay.
And so it's more nomenclature than anything. So I think the confusing part is that calling it the historic preservation district, and then you have historic districts within that.
Yes.
And so with, so the historic preservation overlay district could be one individual property. Like, all of those red dots would be, as proposed, a part of the historic preservation overlay district, even though none are a historic district unto themselves. Although you do have groupings of them that you can probably make a neighborhood out of or close to.
I guess my frustration, and this might go to your point in a way, is that if those homes are in a neighborhood and they have historic designation, like the three that are grouped there in the green, but the homes around them do not have any historic designation, will they be able to build an ADU to the specifications of a developer or to the specifications of the CA or whatever? That, that's where I'm a bit confused. Because if we're preserving historic neighborhoods, then that's where I'm a little confused. The district should be perhaps the neighborhood, not...
Just to follow up on Mary's point, your legend over there refers to those dots as historic landmarks, not historic districts.
Which is correct.
Okay. And then with district, is everything in blue, for instance, is the downtown historic district? That's not what you're suggesting. I know, but that's, but that's what exists.
On the state level, so you...
On the state...
Do I try?
Yes, please.
So the red dots are, are individual houses or buildings that we in La Uman have said, this individual house is also a landmark. These, the pink blob, the blue blob, and the green blob, yes?
We, we said it because the state does it.
No, sir.
And we said it ourselves.
This is our local designation. So the pink blob, the blue blob, and the green blob are buildings and houses that are related to each other. And so the, they're on the national or state register as a group. That doesn't mean that every single building in those blobs is on the national or state register, but it means that that area has been identified as having a historic relationship that is important and so it was deemed a district and a bunch of the buildings and houses within it are listed. Not everything is because you have to have homeowner consent. And not everybody within a district wants to be on a national register. So those are the things that I was recommending to kind of keep everything tidy, that as a city, we might want to go ahead and also automatically put into our local designations so we don't have repercussions that we have today.
And Glenn, this goes to the question that I asked you, and you only answered the first half. So of the, because I was really asking about the houses that are within a national district but are not designated as landmarks. And what constrains them, what constraints are they under even though they never have applied just because they're in that national district?
I don't think there's any constraints on that.
Planning zone, regular, regular planning.
Yeah, but, but not for the historic district, just for the zone that they're in, like, downtown.
You're, you're just missing out on tax credits and grants, basically.
But also on certain expenses to maintain the property.
Right. Which is what I, I would say, one of the things you mentioned was a 50% buy-in to leave the district. And you're suggesting that the city council could just do it, but then isn't that, isn't...
No, ma'am. So what I'm suggesting is that those individual blobs have already been through the whole public process where people have had the ability to opt in on. So, and then it's gone through the national review board, that's a, a state board, and then gone through the approval process from Washington. And so I would think that all those public aspects have been met. And so only the ones that were, even if they're within the blob, only the homeowners who had agreed to be part of the national or state district would then automatically be local. We wouldn't.
Oh, okay.
I'm, I'm not a proponent of forceful, I forget words, it's too late, right, of the, the forceful...
Okay, so that's... And I, and I would agree with that. I would, I would absolutely agree with that. Oh. And then I would suggest too, at the very beginning, when you were talking about current, how to be designated versus proposed, it seemed like you're making it harder to be designated, and I don't think that's what we wanted.
In the case of non-consensual designations, yes.
Non-consensual, yes, I would, I would agree with that completely.
Which is almost always every district. And so if you go back to the blobs.
I would not ever agree to that, but, but for consensual, I don't want to make it harder. I want to make it easier. I want to throw in more carrots even.
Which that process is almost like a direct carryover. The process of consensual designation is pretty much a carryover. But the non-consensual process is much more difficult. But to be clear, almost always a district, so if you made like a new blob somewhere over here, you almost always have some property owners that do not want to be part of that district, forcing it into the non-consensual process. Does that make sense?
I don't, I mean, what would the?
It makes sense, yeah, because we require 50%. So if just one says no, then you're forced into that other process, the non-consensual process.
But that's to make it into a district, but not to designate a home.
Exactly.
Redistricting happens all the time to homeowners, but to designate a home, that elevates what needs to be done to that home, to the point where you're really affecting property values versus, and there is some effect with, with planning zoning and changing zoning rules, but the district, it sounds like, maybe I'm wrong. You have, you create that district over there, but until you designate your home as being special for that district, the HBC is mostly out of it.
If it was a local district, you would be in it.
Yeah.
Anything would come to you within that district. Now, what a lot of cities do is they do a real detailed survey. And they say, this is a contributing structure, this is an important landmark potentially, but this is non-contributing. It's maybe been changed over, over a period of time. So you have more latitude to do things with that non-contributing, and you would look much careful, much more carefully at the.
Yeah, so then I would go back to this non-consensual designation point.
It's tough.
I think Tim had a question.
Yeah, I, I'm, I will just own that I am probably the least familiar with historic preservation challenges. And so Shakita and I, so as I'm sitting here, I'm, I'm trying to understand, as I'm listening to the conversation, what are the problems we're trying to solve? Because that was, that's not real explicit to me, explicit to you, not to me. So I think I've heard legal defensibility is a problem we're trying to solve. That we need demolition approval process and responsibilities redefined, so it's not a council member in the chair.
That's right.
Affordable, additional affordable and tangible housing is a problem for the city we need to solve, whether we do it here or not. But what you're suggesting is that this may present the possible, a possibility in terms of solution. That we have, we don't have maintenance requirements as problems. Are there more problems? You don't have to answer that now, but it will be helpful, Glenn. Maybe I need a tutorial session on, yeah, here are the other problems down there. I've heard solutions, creating new districts and landmarks, applying new designation guidelines, tighter non-consensual designation process with whatever that percentage is, removal of designations potentially as a solution, and the creation of maintenance requirements. What I, what I don't know still, I saw a reference to goals. I haven't seen a goal statement. You said balancing goals, I don't know what they are. I didn't see a goal statement, but if there's a goal, it'd be helpful to have it articulated as a goal. I don't know if enforcement is a problem or a solution in this case. So it'd be helpful to know i- if it's a problem or a solution, and, and what's that balance? I'm not certain, I have to be really helpful to, for somebody to, to kind of lay out, if these are the options, if these are the solutions here are the new problems we can anticipate, because we're hearing some reference to that, we better be prepared to identify and have solutions, strategies, or options. So I, so it would be helpful for me, as a neophyte, not to council, but to historic preservation, to have some of those details fleshed out. I don't know, I'll, I'll yield to Shakita if there are other questions, or, you know, as, as another neophyte in the room.
That's right. I totally agree with everything that you're asking, some of the same notes of what you took down. Back to what you were saying, it makes a lot of sense referencing the problems that we don't see, you know. It makes sense to go ahead and that, that area, that national area has already been designated as a historic district. Why couldn't we just transition those, automatically approve those areas or those landmarks, right? I think, I'm, I want to make sure that I have a clear understanding as to the, the local, the HPOs, the overlay ones, in the areas that we see them dispersed. So once they decide, okay, so they're the HPOs, what happens if we then want to have a district over there? So what happens then, right? And back to Marcia saying, asking about the neighborhoods, if you have five in one area that's not part of the national, what if that area comes to you all and say, we want to be a district? Part of the national district or have, so that, because they want the entire neighborhood to be that historical district. You know, have that characteristic. So I guess that's my, one of my concerns, including with what Tim was saying as well. I was, I was just wondering, because there were some areas that had more than one or two in them, and then so what happens then? You know, moving forward. And then you also mentioned the land code, right? So what does that look like when everything is switched over with the land development code? What are some of those challenges as well?
Yep. Well, it would be a whole new set of regulations that would be in addition to all the other regulations in the land development code. You're in a designated property, that means there's these requirements as far as demolition, going through historic preservation to get a certificate of appropriateness. I mean, all those rules then kick in.
Right, but those are rules that exist, and you want to include them, right? I mean, they're already.
Yes, we're just moving into another section of the code.
It's not like it's all new, this isn't all, a lot of this is just reorganization.
Like you were saying.
Just also, you know.
Well, so back to the idea of goals, obviously you're referring to this slide, so these are the goals, and I.
I think there's eight that you currently list, but sorry.
I know who you is, because it isn't me.
Very sorry to say.
So these readlike goals, okay, protect the historic character of the city. I don't think anyone would disagree with that one. The enhancement of property values and staples, let's just stop with the enhancement of property values. You know, I get complaints about things the city does regularly. That say, I don't want you to do this because it's going to decrease my property values. And what I say to them is, you know, changes in city policy are for the greater good of the city, and your investment in your property is just that, an investment, and it's not the job of the city to protect your property values. If it says that, then people are going to argue with me about, about that.
Also not necessarily how property values work, though real estate freezing, that's not exactly how they work.
Yeah, yeah, we certainly don't have any, any way of advancing or decreasing property values.
And again, this is taken from the current code. These aren't, things are changing.
Yeah.
But.
Well, we should fix it while we're at it.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I don't know if some of the historic preservation commissioners want to speak to maybe some of the counter arguments that there could be for these purposes.
Austin, I can touch on some, just based on my experience with locally less than the districts. This probably extends from the fact that many times locally designated historic decisions and historic preservation codes were in response to neighborhood decline, to disinvestment in older neighborhood codes. And historic preservation was used as a, or ordinances that were used or have been used as a tool to help halt and stem neighborhood decline. And a lot of that decline had to do with inappropriate convergence of homes to older neighborhood structures. I personally had a house that I undid some damage to in that regard. So it, it goes back to a lot of the historic purposes, the fact that our zoning codes didn't always respect that older neighborhoods had developed at a different time and were functionally illegal under, under more suburban zoning codes. So that's really where the property value comes in. It's really a historic, I mean, it's a historic perspective of historic preservation, if that makes any sense. But it really comes back to the fact that these were neighborhoods that were declined at one point. And they were trying to protect properties from being demolished, to put in an appropriate building. So that's just context.
So that's a good context, and it means that we should reword that, because it's not to preserve the property values, it's to enable the homeowner to preserve the historic character of their own property, which they may not, wouldn't be able to afford to do if there were not special protections on landmark. But that is a scary phrase.
It's, it's common, in fact zoning too, it's often a preamble in zoning, it's there to protect property values, but it makes me cringe a little bit too.
We should fix it everywhere.
Okay, I think the second part, the stabilization of historic buildings is really where the important part is. That, that's the important part, and that's what we're hearing. So in a, in a, in a worst-case scenario, under the current proposal, you can imagine anything that's not a red dot could get theoretically raised with whatever structure built without any purview of the historic preservation commission, even being aware of it. It would all be regulated by the land use code. And so that, I think, I, I mean, on behalf of at least myself and what, what I've heard, and, and maybe one other commissioner, I don't think that's, that's what, not what we were seeking when we started this process of, hey, we should really take a look at this demolition code. We were seeking some, some level of protection for these neighborhoods as a whole that doesn't, doesn't elevate to the standard of a landmark. We're not asking for every home in this, in these neighborhoods to have to meet these landmark criteria where, where, you know, where they have to, or just where they. Because those folks are opting to put further restrictions on themselves or for their own benefit, because they love the house, because they love historic preservation, because they want to get tax credits. They're opting for higher restrictions. But our feeling is there ought to be another, a lesser, but still more than now tier that, that protects the neighborhood as a whole.
Which was my question about the district versus your individual dots. And that third bullet point, if you are asking for, to have absolutely no ADUs in the historic designated homes, well, then that, that third bullet point doesn't work, because those designated homes, right? No, go back to the one that you were on, the goals, the goals, yeah.
It's previous.
Two new drivers.
There you go. They would not be able to increase the economic and financial benefits of having an ADU on their home. And they, my fear is that if, unless that is the outset of one of the things that they need to know before they go into the process, chances are they may not want to go into the process, or once they're in and find out they cannot put an ADU on to their home, they may want to come back out of it, the same.
Could I maybe respond to your?
Yes, yes, please.
Um, I think the concern that I heard was that, not that you couldn't do it, but that you could do it automatically. So there's the, currently, something like that requires HBC. And, and the question is what, and there are several bright lines here, which none, which I think to Tim's point, were not. Not clear bright lines in the others, but there are certain things that would only require staff, and then they could be done. Certain things would require a city council, which means the city council, getting the input from the HBC, could be done. But, but the, but the, I think the bullet points that you could show were that some things could be done automatically without HBC involving, without city council involving. And I think those, those are where we need much longer discussion. Where we get a clear set of where the bright lines are.
Okay, oh, this is historic, this is right.
Yeah, and so what I would say, under this scenario where the district was literally only the landmarks, we're only going to provide this to the landmarks, then I would, then I would say we absolutely have to have, then I would object, right? Because if we're talking about landmarks, if we're talking about neighborhoods, then I think it goes back to, to just letting the HBC review it. We had, we had an example of this a couple of years ago, where somebody came in and wanted to put an ADU over their garage. And, and it was a historic structure, and they wanted to blow it to smithereens, and we said no. And we said, this is what you ought to do, is you ought to get, get, basically told them, get a historic architect or somebody that knows this and come back with a different plan, and they did, and we approved it, because then it was approved. So we, we kind of guided the process, and, and the homeowner got an ADU, but, but the neighborhood got a more appropriate structure.
Okay, I, thank you for clarifying, and I totally misunderstood what you had said. Because those landmarks are already protected, the neighborhood isn't. That's all, just the conversation, so. And that, that's, so to clarify for me again, does the overlay protect the neighborhood?
No.
Not that.
Yeah, I don't.
Not as proposed.
Okay.
So the overlay, all it does, because I think it was said, well, it's a lateral move. It's a lateral move to bring your historic preservation regulations into your land development code, which means it needs to walk and act like a zoning district. And so that's a lot of what that discussion is. Just those red dots being essentially just mapped on the zoning map. But those districts, which again is a state process, they haven't gone through any local process, will remain the same under the state regulations, but they are currently not touched by local regulation.
And I would just say conjecture would be that if we were to try to bring in an entire neighborhood section with a bunch of properties that are not historic landmarks, but almost immediately to my mind require a non-consensual designation process.
That's exactly right.
And I think part of the conversation is where we want to set that benchmark, get right, 50% or higher, maybe possibly depending. Because I would say that separate from what I'm sure HPC has heard from Henna, the Historic Design Network Association, I've had meetings with, with those representatives as well, and they're looking at a much more neighborhood-based concept with specific design standards, right? I think that's, you know, where I think this kind of disconnect here is, is a little bit.
Yeah, that area is shown on here as well. It's, it's the lighter pink that surrounds.
Like, as we see little dots in many other neighborhoods, the Kightley neighborhood just north of the, you see stuff below Third Avenue there. As we see the, the green West Side historic district exceeds the original town site, for instance, and into multiple different neighborhoods, if you will, Bone Farm, Warner's Orchard, historic West Side, and so.
But don't we already kind of have a non-consensual zone in that one mile original block? Like, everybody within that block will want to do something, not that block, but that.
Square.
Blue square, thank you, have to come into HPC, but then the rest of the city is kind of left in this, not even a gray area.
You're right, the way this, the way the current demolition code is ever here is written, if you're in the original town site, you're supposed to come to HPC.
For demolition, right? Just for demolition, right?
But you're taking that out right now in your proposal, so we're losing some teeth. I just, I'm just trying to express that I think we're losing more than we're gaining.
I mean, I think you're right, as far as the demolition process goes.
Does the, does the state slash federal consortium that, that defines the blue, the pink, and the green, do any other? uh, do they monitor any reinforcement at all, or do they just get grants if you're in that area?
There are, designation is honorary, there is no enforcement. You could put your house on the national register today, and you could blow those up tomorrow. However, you would not get all of those wonderful grants and other things. The government would protect it. Um, it changes if you wanted to go in for a federal grant. Um, so even today, um, I was dealing with private homes in the Marshall fire um, that are looking for help funds, and so we're, we are having to work that um, historic preservation issues to make sure things are on the front. So, um, that's where things get sticky, is if you want federal monies in your historic home, then you gotta follow that historic law.
How, Steve said, uh, the state may not do that, but you can't just blow those at home unless the city.
Because of local stuff, yes.
Because of local.
Locals are all.
A new question that Steve's asked, and I think we're all interested in, but the initial answer, and that's not, is when you talk about moving that out of the, then what's, how's it replaced and is that good accomplishment?
I think we'd like to, I mean, it sounds like from what we heard tonight, that there is, um, definitely a desire to, um, for that blue square, maybe just those properties is what I'm hearing, that the HPC wants to hear if those properties are proposed for demolition, even if they're not designated. Is that, am I getting that right?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Right, not, I'm sorry, not what you want, that's what I'm saying, right?
But we wanted to expand that into other parts, if not the entire city.
Right.
Because, like, I live just outside of that blue square, and, um, it's, it's an old neighborhood, it's not officially historic, designated yet, but we're seeing weird demolitions and weird pop-ups and things that'll get out of hand really quickly if we don't.
So, I think if we have our marching orders, as far as that goes, I guess I would just say, um, there are some legal issues that were brought to our attention with that process, and that's why that process was ultimately changed. But I think knowing that that is the policy direction that you want to see, we can propose something that hopefully gets approved.
I did not talk.
Well, I just wanna, so, real quick, the proposal for non-consensual is fifty percent. Is that the proposal, right? Yeah, alright.
Because I know that council's conversation in our executive session was slightly different. I think we had, you were holding it to a slightly higher standard, I remember, from our conversation, we were talking something a little bit sixty and above, I think, so.
Yes, so federal and state are fifty-one percent for a third district. But again, that doesn't mean, you know, like the individual homes, like, they opt out, they opt out. It could be slightly different, but there's precedent for fifty, fifty-one percent.
Okay.
I mean, that's something you wanna hear for sure tonight, that, you know, what number people seem to be most comfortable with.
So, can I make a request? I don't, have you heard policy direction tonight? Or you've got way better listening skills than me. Could you summarize the, not you, would you summarize the policy direction and get it back to us? I'd like to know what you heard, and what direction you think you're taking.
Yep, I'm not sure I have heard it.
Yeah, no, I don't think we have either. I think I just meant to say that's what we're here for tonight, we wanna hear those, those conversations. If it's a higher percentage than fifty percent, we'd love to talk about that.
And we wanted to make sure, obviously, HPC and council had the opportunity to exchange ideas, rather than do this in separate meetings continually. So, I think this is kind of our first inroad into the folks who are the professionals doing the work at HPC, helping inform the process.
Yeah, what I've heard was, I'm sorry, no, no, that's okay. Well, 'cause what I've heard is, is we're not all clear on the definitions.
It's hard to make policy when, like, I didn't understand the district versus the landmarks, um, and, and what that meant. So, for me, this is more of a clarification of, of our policy now and the discussion of where do we wanna go with it. Um, so, uh, should you get?
No, I'm, I'm possible.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I just wanted, uh, say that, you know, come from over water, just to kinda answer some of your questions and, and kinda leave everyone together with regard to what the problem is that we're trying to solve. There are multiple, there are probably multiple more problems that are hidden, you know, hearing the committee, you know, we're coming to the realization that there are little, there are a lot of little, you know, potholes that we can get stuck into. So, um, demolition, yes, um, looking at the process of demolition currently, um, we proposed a major certificate of appropriateness. Um, as far as affordable attainable housing, you know, like you said, it's a very large problem with probably a larger solution, and I'm not sure that we can solve that today with regard to how it relates to historic preservation. But what we'd like to do is, you know, I can assist, um, Glenn in putting together some of the quote-unquote concerns of the area that we have, you know, maybe not as clearly highlighted tonight, but we can do that, highlight, uh, summarize those, and then go through and, like, um, Austin provided today, give some proposed solutions. So, you know, whether it's fifty, fifty, fifty-one percent, whether it's sixty percent, you know, we can, um, kind of point those, point those out and maybe some of the issues with it. For example, you know, wanting to bring in, automatically bring in some of those national registers, like the, the blue, um, into our local, into our local historic, um, uh, bring in historically, uh, locally historic, what we can, one of the things that we need to look into is whether or not there's state statutes that require that we need to go, still go through the public process, even though they went through it at the federal level. And so, there are little nuances like that that we would need to look into. And so, you know, there, there are unfortunately a lot of questions that are still lingering, but, you know, this is, every single question comes with additional, you know, information, and every single, every single little thing that we hear, I mean, there's more problems or more concern, you know, areas of concern, but.
Opportunities.
Opportunities, there you go. And so, what we'd like to do is, the way that our code is currently written, it's not as clear as it should be, um, the definitions aren't as clear as it should be sometimes, you know, um, some of the criteria with the fifty, fifty-year-old, you know, it's something that we can maybe add a little bit more flexibility, add a little bit more, uh, uh, just give ourselves a little bit more flexibility, what to do, how to do it, especially if affordable attainable comes into play. And so, you know, what we can work on is make together that statement, that summarization of policy goals, quote-unquote, maybe what we've discussed today, but it's, I think it's gonna be more areas of concern, not necessarily policy issues that we've heard, that areas of concern where we can, from there, go to some of the policy directions that staff is looking for. Um, we do have some ideas as to propose language for the code amendments. Is that something that you would like to see as well?
I would, especially, I, and the rest of you, please chime in, um, especially when you're talking about, uh, looking at the neighborhood, the structure and the, the history of the neighborhood, some, some code, but, some code language on that so that they would have to go for any kind of development within that neighborhood, have it okayed, rather than just have the, because it, it is not a landmark building, but it, to preserve the neighborhood, that needs to go before, um, the historic.
So, possibly have it adhere to some of these newer design guidelines that Glenn mentioned.
Yes, and, right, on, on every, every district, so.
Thank you, John. I, I think that what has happened here is that, um, there seems to have been an effort to put everything in the same category, and what I think, you know, your, your analysis should be, um, categorization by use case. So, something about the current code now is it treats demolition differently than it treats everything else, and that is working, so you don't wanna undo that. But, but it seems like you have three use cases, or three categories of, of buildings, the, um, you know, buildings that are eligible for this demolition, you know. You have, you have buildings that can be modified versus have to go through a process just to be modified, and then you have buildings that don't have any special designation at all. And, and I don't think it's appropriate to put those together because you're either gonna miss an alert, or you're gonna drive everybody crazy um, with, with having reviews. So, um, whether you wanna expand the, the must-review on demolition, uh, square or not, that's an appropriate square, and demolition is the only use case in it. On the other hand, uh, you know, you, if you wanna do the overlay district, um, whether the overlay district includes the national districts as well as the historic landmarks to try to put them in one thing, well, again, you, you need to, you need to go and look at what the use cases are. If I am in, uh, uh, the West Side Historic District, and I wanna build an ADU and I'm not a historic landmark, do we care enough about the character of the neighborhood if we're gonna review your ADU application? You know, so Hannah, for example, would say, yes, absolutely, have to review that. A lot of the homeowners would say, no, if I wanted that kind of review, I would, uh, have applied to be a historic landmark. Um, so, I, I think there's some, some use case analysis that needs to, to still be done before this goes to code.
But I agree with that, but to your point of the West Side, I think it was you who personally said.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
That, um, ADUs and pop-ups are occurring that are not in line with the historic value of the neighborhood. So, um, we do need to define that. Is it district that we are looking at to, uh, look at, to have the ADUs go to the historic preservation permission first, or is it just a neighborhood? That's a big ask. It's a big ask for the district, and it's a big ask for the neighborhood. So, I don't know how you write code for that, to be quite honest. Glenn, that's your job, I.
Somebody's job, the worst one.
May or fact, I think what you're talking to really is not that uncommon where a lot of cities have design guidelines for individual home and ADU review that actually don't have anything to do with historic preservation or city council, but there are specific design guidelines that are required at either time of building permit or prior. So, I think that is, uh, perhaps a gap in some of our regulations that we do wanna fill.
And we're written in historic into that.
Yeah, and I think that this conversation, at least in my mind, is helping me think through how we might do that more broadly.
Okay.
In addition to the historic specific, I do think those types of alterations and new homes are occurring in other neighborhoods where people might like to see some additional copy of the new design.
Right. So, you're talking about repeating whatever, the facides, the materials, roof pitches, those kinds of things, that, that's what we.
Yeah, I think some of the broad design guidelines, and again, I, my neighborhood in Longmont is very different than the historic East Side, so like, those two wouldn't be, you know, you wouldn't use the same design guidelines, but I think you could certainly use similar elements by neighborhood, which is a big lift.
It is.
But it's not uncommon. I think we've all, some of us worked in other cities that have had that, and that's a pretty common occurrence.
So, when, when a home wants to, uh, put on an ADU, does planning and zoning know then if we go through this process that this home is in a historic overlay district? You would know that.
We would have to find that, yeah.
Yeah, so that you would know different standards here, different design standards because of where they are, rather than, okay, that's.
And the easy one is that original town site.
Yes, absolutely.
Pretty normal.
Okay, if we have nothing else, we have a meeting in six minutes next. Thank you. Okay, any other questions?
Just, just, just somebody just, just a closing summary, so what, what should we expect before?
Well, I think what we're gonna come back with is a little bit more specific language.
In this setting, or?
Um, we could certainly, this was ideal to have both of us here. It's, it's hard to coordinate, but, um, I think it would be ideal that we come with more specific guidelines of what we're trying to solve.
I think it's very clear to have a city council and the HPC here, because otherwise you're each guessing a little bit.
Yeah.
And I was, I think it makes it more difficult.
Yeah.
I think this is actually an easier process.
Yep, and we're getting more focused, I've noticed that, so that's good.
A whole lot of dollars.
I wouldn't go so far as, you're getting, I think you're getting a lot of ideas in the mind. I, I'd ask, just following Tim, what is timeline, what do we start our next meeting?
We will look at your calendars, and we are, and we'll guide our timeline.
It looks like what Harold needs to put on the agenda before the end of the year.
Right.
Yes.
Our executive sessions. So, I, you know, I really like this because as council, when, uh, the residents come up about historic, uh, preservation issues on their neighborhood or their house, I was like, I don't know. So, um, this, this has been great, so we have some ideas.